Welcome everybody here. As they call the regular meeting of ISD 701, School Board's Order, April 19th, excuse me, 2020 at 3:30 PM. Elliot Sand, Xavier Stein. With that, we move to two Pledgeable Agents. Please stand if you wish.
Pledgeable Agents to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as in heaven.
Thank you. Once again, welcome. And we move to item three. Motion to approve the agenda.
Au pair.
Support.
Move by Director Polter. Supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we move to item four. Approve the Consent Agenda.
Some more.
So far.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we move to item five. A couple of comments. I see one person, Ms. Debland Genke. Turn her over to Superintendent.
Yep. Ms. Leganki is here, and she is here to talk about science. So if you could come to the podium, Ms. Leganki.
I won't take a lot of your time, but the Hibbing High School Science Department is extending an invitation to all of the directors. We would like to meet with you regarding student enrollment in our core courses, our elective courses, our career academy courses, and our sit courses. And we could meet with you either individually or as a group. And if you are interested, please contact our department head, Mr. Sadis.
Regarding?
Regarding student enrollment in our core courses, our elective courses, our sit courses, and our career academy courses.
Chair, I would be very interested in learning more, and I would ask if we could do it in conjunction with a school board meeting so we could all have an opportunity to hear and ask questions?
Well, my department head is here, and we would like more of the department to be here. There's only three of us right now. What do you think, Mr. Sadis?
Madam Director, perhaps it's more appropriate that we would speak in a different setting.
How many meetings? Would there be just the one?
I should think so.
Is there issues? Is that what this is?
Well, we just invite the opportunity for our position.
Because...
So we can send three board members?
Three at a time, or whatever?
Or just three to represent the board?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we...
Thank you.
Just let us know when and kind of place. We'll work out the goals.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item six, item A, information.
Yep, well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. Can we go back to the science for one second? Is there anything happening on the physics?
I don't think anything has changed since we talked last time. I think it's still not being offered. It isn't in the schedule to be offered next year, but that could change depending on enrollment. I think there was some conversation amongst Mrs. Secora and the Science Department about possibly one teacher teaching chemistry or taking on an overload in chemistry, and another teacher potentially teaching physics. I think they've talked about that a little bit, but I think it's still enrollment-driven or signup-driven. So I don't know that it's been changed since we talked last time.
Yeah, I think, you know, and I understand what they have five kids sign up for or something.
I think it was more than that.
Some low number, so they decided not to run it at this point, right?
I think there was maybe five in the upper level physics and seven in a different level of physics. So I think there's 12 kids that have an interest in physics.
And we're not running either?
And I think that was part of the conversation this week is potentially putting those together. Actually, if you'd let Mr. Sadis speak, I don't know if he would, but I think it did involve him, and there was three levels of physics that I think Mr. Sadis was talking about teaching in one hour. I don't know, is it... Do you want to comment on that, Carl? Is that... I don't want to speak incorrectly, so.
Mr. Aldrich, I think that is a fair assessment. Perhaps what we could do is continue that conversation, Director, at another time.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make it clear that I think it's, you know, even if it's not cost-effective for our district to run a small physics class, I would like to say that I'm still for it, even if it's not cost-effective. I think we should really do it. We have, you know, if we're going to say we're high academic, if we're a high-quality academic place, we gotta do this. We have to.
This is being worked on, and that's going to be part of the meeting.
I get that. I just want to make it clear that that's how I feel about it, is that I think it's super important.
Thank you.
And Chair, I echo that because I just feel like whether it's a student going on to engineering, whether it's a student going on to medical, physical therapy field, and if they have to take SAT subject tests, many of those are, you know, like physics and science. So I'm hoping we can do something in enough time so students stay at Hibbing High School and don't go and look for an online physics course. I was hopeful that maybe we could do something with Chisholm. I don't know if that's possible, but I was watching...
That's still in works also.
But I was watching their school...
Just a rehash from...
But I was watching their school board meeting of last week. Last night, I watched their school board meeting of last week, and it seems as though their meeting with Tom Watson is not going to be until the middle of June. So I'm hoping there's something we can do because I too feel like...
I just met with the board chair over there a day before yesterday, and I'm going to try to meet with them in two weeks.
Oh, about the physics thing?
No, Tom Watson, and then...
But that's two different topics, isn't it? Well, I don't know if it's two different topics or not.
That'll come up during this discussion, and then I'll talk with them too. I'd be remiss if I didn't do it because of my background and size and myself and...
Exactly.
Went through all this stuff, so.
But I just don't want us to let this go. We cannot let this go.
And hopefully then we can have that meeting with the Science Department here sooner than later to get their side of it.
Okay.
So we are back with item six, correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just a piece of information that the District Mental Health Committee is putting together a staff appreciation, which will be held at Valentini's on May 3rd from 3:00 until 6:00. And we're just letting the public know and letting everybody on H-Pat know that Hibbing Board Directors may be in attendance, and there may be a quorum at that event, but there will be no school board business that happens during that event.
Right, correct. Thank you for the clarification and all that. Okay, item seven, personnel. Did we get it right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to adopt the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teacher contract of Carol Lee Hagan, a probationary teacher at the close of the 2022-23 school year.
Au pair.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter. Supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Motion carries.
Item B is a motion to adopt the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teacher contract of Tina Carlson, a probationary teacher at the close of the 2022-23 school year.
Au pair.
Support. Moved by Director Polter. Supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to reduce the teacher contract of Heather Matt V... Excuse me. Heather Matt V, a probationary teacher from a 1.0 elementary teacher to a .6 FTE teacher, Washington Elementary, effective August 28th, 2023.
Au pair.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter. Supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion?
Is this going from having classroom to doing something different in teaching?
It would be an interventionist position.
Going to an interventionist?
Yep.
So with her description here, can I gain more information? But on the other two, what classes did they teach?
Here, Ms. Hagan is an ELL teacher. She's a .3 ELL. So that's our students that are struggling with English in our district. She's... It's a rule that she has, and it has to be non-renewed and posted because she doesn't hold the proper licensure. So it has to be, has to be done. The other one is Tina Carlson, and she is currently the interventionist at the Washington Elementary.
So as far as that English as a second language?
Yes.
How long can she teach for us without the license? Every year? Or is this just the first time? I thought we hired a girl-out-girl for English as a second.
No. Ms. Nagler does sign language for...
Yeah, oh, that's the right one.
Yes, yep. And that's more related to her contracted services and special education, but... No, this... Ms. Hagan held this position last year, and I believe... I believe we can do three OFPs out of licensure.
Is she trying to get her license?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay.
And this is a tough one to fit and fill, and I don't know... You know, this could potentially be combined with another position by the time next August comes around. I mean, we might look to add it to an interventionist position so somebody can get closer to full-time. This year, it worked out real nicely with Ms. Hagan. You know, and I'm sorry because I don't want to speak out of turn, but Mr. Gabardi is here, and he oversees Ms. Hagan. Maybe you could give a little bit of insight.
Yeah, I've overseen the past couple of years. Vessel took it this year, but the ELL, from year to year, it changed. Like, we've had up to five, six kids that need services. We think this year, we're down to one kid. So it's just fluid depending on when kids are coming in and out. And it's one of those positions that we don't fill until we're in August. I mean, right before. And we've combined with other positions before. We've had it standalone. Ms. Hagan was one of our permanent subs at the Lincoln, and then did this along with it. So it just kind of was an easy flow together. She did it last year and this year. So we really kind of wait until... And because of the OFP, we have to post it for an extended period of time. So we have to get the posting done and then have it out there for, I don't know if it's still 60-day for this one. So we always fill out like right before school starts over here.
Just a little quick update and not to go off on a sidebar here, but we just received an email last week from Pelsby that the rules are changing on OFPs and licensure. And I'm attending a webinar next week, I believe, that I should be more knowledgeable after that. But the rules are changing a little bit, and it looks like they're changing a little bit in our favor as far as the posting goes, that there wouldn't be extensive 60-day postings required on some of these OFPs. Depending on the FTE, if it's, I believe, greater than .25, I think it has to be posted. Anything lower than .25 doesn't have to be posted. So an example with that would be Mr. Abadi, that he is a career tech OFP or endorsement that we get through MDE for him to teach some of his courses. And that's really just a .1.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Those wouldn't have to be posted.
So it would be better for us, yeah.
I think it would be. I'm sure there's a downside to it, but I don't know enough about it yet until I sit through that webinar and understand all the ins and outs of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item D, Mr. Chair. Item D is a motion to extend gratification of tenure agreement for a probationary teacher for the 2023-2024 school year.
Au pair.
Chair will support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. That way, when I support it, I won't forget where we're at. Okay, item eight. Directors, anything for the directors? Hearing none, principals? Any questions, principals?
Just a few things. I mean, we're in the spring, so there's not a lot going on. And also, then, we're just finishing up our MCA, or in the middle of our MCA testing. Our reading testing is done at the Lincoln. So we just finished that up. If there's a couple of kids that have to do some makeups, we're still have the opportunity to finish that. But for the most part, the reading's all done. Math, we are currently about halfway through the math. We have... Are finishing that up this week. So those kids are working on that, and then it'll be another, a little bit of a week, week and a half break. And then we'll have our fifth graders will take the science test the second week of May, and that'll wrap things up for us. I know there's the seventh, eighth, tenth, and eleventh grade kids at the high school are also doing MCA testing. But for us, the Lincoln, it's everyone we got third through sixth. So we have a lot of testing going on right currently right now over there. So that's... Pretty much exudes our, you know, mid-April through beginning of May. So that's kind of what's been going on. So things have been quiet and just been working a lot on that. Our PTO's been pretty active. We have our major fundraiser, the Color Run coming up. That's on May 19th with the rainy day of the 26th towards the end of school year, but that's their major fundraiser. They do, it's kind of more of a donation thing where they get pledges from family, whoever they can, and get different incentives. They're getting different things throughout from the PTO and then some other incentives. I mean, as principals, we have to wear wings one day, and the staff is going to be wearing some tutus and different things that we've lined up for them. First, some incentives along with other things that they're going to get on the day of the Color Run. But currently, I talked to them today, and they have raised $38,000 already for this. So that's the big one. So they don't... It's like I said, it's just pledges, and this goes to the kids, each grade level throughout the year. Field trip that they could take as a grade level, or teachers want someone, they want some money for transportation for a bus, different equipment that they buy us as a school.
As a grades three through six?
Yes. So that's been a real big one. And that day, I mean, it's... You want to see some fun chaos stop by that day because there's a lot going on, and the kids have a ton of fun, and they're, you know, get to run outside. If you've ever seen the color packets where they throw on at each other as they're running along and doing stuff like that. So it's a fun day, that's for sure. Couple other things. We have our Lincoln Title One. We call it Title One Muffin Morning. Each school, the Greenhaven, the Washington, and the Lincoln will do this, but ours is on May 11th in the morning. Gives our entitled kids and their families an opportunity to come in, meet with the teachers. I think we get them for the book. They have, we have some juice, coffee, and some muffins in the morning. They meet with their title teachers. Internet Just will be there involved as well. It's kind of just part of what we do, getting the community, and those kids and those families in the building, and they get to come in. A few weeks back, we did a family title night at the Lincoln, which was K all the way up through five. And that was all the families came in. They had tons of activities at the building and pizza and stuff for them too. So that's incorporated through our title program and our Internet Just as well. So you get the command, and like I said, the kids get to show off the stuff they've been doing, and they get some books and other things from us, and get to visit the teachers. So just a couple of things that we do every year with our title stuff. Other than that, really just in our world and in the office and stuff, and we're geared up and getting ready for next fall. So we're working on scheduling. We're working on, you know, potentially getting the class this rolling. And so like for Mr. Vessel and I, about, you know, end of March, May, or April, all the focus goes to September. So we've been working a lot and getting all that rolling now because there's a lot of work, and we get a lot done. And we're trying to get as much of the thread to go in June before we both leave for our summer little break. And we come back in August and start rolling everything out. So May coming up will be, you know, a fun month. Tends to be a lot of field trips and stuff for the kids and stuff because the school year's winding down. So there'll be different activities, like the Color Run and stuff like that. But other than that, that's kind of how things are going in our world over there right now. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I have a question in general. It used to be where, I think, fifth and sixth graders would move around. Are they still doing that? Where they move from this teacher for English, this for science, this for math?
A little bit. We've gotten... In our fifth grade, we have our teachers grouped in teachers of two. So they'll like, one of the teachers will teach the reading, and the other one will teach the math. So there will be an alignment there. And sixth grade is pretty much the same.
So it's two different?
Two, yeah.
Okay, because I think it used to be three.
At the sixth grade, there was a one group of three. I think in fifth, when I first got through this group of three, as we rolled through COVID, everything went to self-contained on your own, and now it kind of brought it back a little bit. We are looking at our schedule for next year, our prep schedules and our teacher schedules, trying to align the whole building. Because now that we got our interventionist programs, teachers there and our title teachers and stuff, we have all this extra support. We'd like to see, and we're working on it right now, it'd be nice to see the majority of the building or grade levels teaching the same thing at the same time. So everyone in fifth grade is getting reading at...
A certain time.
From 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Your interventionists can pull out the reading kids. I need the extra help, your special ed teachers, your title teachers. Instead of having kids in math getting pulled out to go to do reading interventionists, or kids in reading get pulled out to go do math interventionist or title. So that's one thing we're looking at right now and working on with our teachers. We brought some proposals to them. They're looking over. We've met with some grade levels, a couple of some good ideas there too. So trying to align, because we have all these different things in place now to support the kids and the students. Now we're just trying to fine-tune it. So that's some of the stuff we're looking at as well.
That makes a lot of sense to do it that way. I feel like, does the Greenhaven do it that way and the Washington, kind of?
Pretty sure that they do, yeah. Because it just, it streamlines everything. So like I said, kids aren't leaving math. We're working on reading. Yeah.
Okay, and then the teachers, if they're in groups of two, the one teacher teaches like social studies, reading, literature?
The big change usually is math and reading.
Math and reading, and then what else?
And then some science too, because especially our fifth grade is our age, like it's tested in science, but still it's third, fourth, fifth for science, for that fifth grade test. But so some of the teachers, generally the major specialty is like, you'll do the reading, I'll do the math. And then we'll pick up the rest on our own.
Oh, on your own, then?
Yeah.
Then it's up to the individual classroom?
Yeah, then you have your homeroom. So you always have your homeroom kids that you start with in the morning, do your attendance. And then I might start with my homeroom kids. And I'm teaching reading, I'll do reading. My partner teacher will be teaching math, and then we'll switch, and then I'll teach the other partner's reading class, and then we'll teach my math class.
Yeah.
Just to, you know.
And our kids are still getting a third of the year for FIAD? And a third for music? And a third for, what's the art?
Art.
Does that still?
At our building, no.
No, that's not, no.
At our building now, we have FIAD all year.
Well, you have FIAD. Because maybe I'm thinking of the grade, the lower.
We used to do the trimesters because we had floating... One of the teachers floated between the building, but we got the schedule set up now so we have the same ones all year long, except we're in a four-day rotation. So two of the days, the art teachers with us, and the other two days, the music teachers with us. So we go every four days. So we have this calendar set up through year one, two, three, four. And just one, two, three, four. And every, and we have, teachers know what day it is based on the day of the week. We give them calendars so that we know.
Okay. So FIAD, the kids get every day?
They'll get...
Or almost every day?
They get it two times. We have two FIAD teachers. So in a four-day rotation, two of the four, they'll have FIAD.
They'll have... So the kids get FIAD twice a week? And they get art how often?
Art and music at least once, sometimes twice, depending on how that four-day rotation rolls through. Yep.
That's my main focus, is like what the kids are actually receiving.
Yep.
Okay, so they're getting art, music, once or twice, and they're getting FIAD twice?
Twice. Yes, unless it's a three-day week or however. And then we also, of course, incorporate fifth and sixth graders as well, getting swimming at least once a week, sometimes twice.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to get reviewed on that.
No problem.
So because they rotate math, reading, if you're now trying to get everybody to teach math at the same time, how is that going to work?
So that's some of the stuff we're working on with the teachers. It was... The easiest way to do it would just be self-contained. Everyone has their own kids. But we're looking at some ways of probably make it so that you can still do the math, I can still do the reading, and we're at the, we'll have it at the same time. So we're working on some different...
They'd have a bigger class.
Bigger class.
They'd have twice, two classes.
You could get into some ability groups, stuff like that.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, so that's some of the stuff we're looking at.
The ability grouping is key.
Yep.
Because the higher kids need the higher curriculum, and the lower kids need the lower curriculum so they can all grow.
Yep.
At their own rate.
If we do the ability grouping, the kids that generally would have your interventionist services, your title services would be in this group. So they would all be still getting reading at the same time. Maybe your higher kids, we could get those kids too because a lot of times, the higher students, you know, we're focused on differentiated instruction much as we can, but you tend to focus on, you know, your middle kids and lower kids.
Yeah, we can't do that.
We want to work on the higher kids too. So, yeah, so we're working on a couple of things.
Sure.
So we're meeting with the classroom or the grade levels. Right now, we met with one of them. However, we get the other ones coming up here and get it all ready to go before they leave so we can let them all know what they're doing in the fall.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome. Thank you. Anything from anyone else there? Any committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move to item nine, Administrative Business. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations.
Au pair. Do you want to vote for one?
Yep, I'll read it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't see the list in our page.
I didn't either.
Okay. Move to... Chair will support. No discussion.
Okay, thank you. So we have three donations for this board meeting. The first is a $1,166.16 donation from the City of Hibbing Mayor's Contingency Fund on behalf of past mayor Rick Kanata to support special education. Second donation is for $660, a grant awarded to Heather Tomzak from Alpha Delta Kappa to support the HHS art classes. And the third donation is for $100, a grant awarded to Alex Sepala from the Alpha Delta Kappa to support the Hibbing High School Industrial Tech classes. And that's it?
Did that just say something about choir roles? Or did we already approve that?
I don't know if we approved the donation there. I think we did approve the donation from the Owens Foundation at a recent board meeting.
Did we do, yeah?
$5,000, I think it was.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the agreement for targeted services between ISD number 701 and the Northland Learning Center for the period of July 1, 2023 through May 31, 2024.
Support.
Moved by Director Egan, supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the agreement for access to Level 4 services between ISD 70... Excuse me, ISD number 701 and the Northland Learning Center for the period September 6, 2023 through May 30, 2024.
Some more.
Support. Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the speech therapy service contract between ISD number 701 and Speech Partners for the 2023-2024 school year.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item E is a motion to approve Richard Aldrich to act as the identified official with authority Iowa for 701 to authorize review and rectify users for the Education Identity Access Management System, EDIM.
Support.
Moved by Director Egan, supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion?
I'd like to hear you explain what that means.
So what... So what EDIM is, is an MDE program or site or window that different individuals within the district need access to certain secure reports. Like, for instance, Derek and Mr. Gabardi work on the ELL grant with Ms. Hagan that we just talked about. There's special authority that I give them to go in and work on that grant and that application and that information with the MDE. Anybody that accesses anything within the MDE system, whether it serves the financial system or anything to do with lunch programs, anything to... There's 100 different categories. I have to authorize and give them access. So I update that every fall with new staff members and continuing staff members, and their access is only good for one calendar year. And my authority as the Iowa is only good for one calendar year. So you approve me to go in and approve access for school personnel that need that access. And I hope I did it justice, but it's a complicated system. It changes all the time, and Trina and I worked on it hand-in-hand. So even though I am the authority, the identified authority, Trina is doing a lot of the inputting for me.
Is that a law, a statute, or...?
It... A school district has to identify in Iowa by statute and...
Minnesota's standing.
Yes, yes. And typically, it's the superintendent, but it could be some, it could be someone else. No, it's not, it's a state thing.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item F is a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar.
Obvious. Chair will support. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to discuss.
Go ahead.
Um, as I've said before, I think we should have a full week off on our calendar. I have now learned that we had in excess of 70 teachers requesting personal leave days around Easter, either the week before, week after, you know, those weeks. So our district is paying, and most of them were, um, approved, and then they actually have to say no. No more personal leave, because there's so many of you that are wanting it. So that they could have a week off to take their family on a vacation, whatever. And so now the district is paying all those subs because our teachers, that many of our teachers, they even have to say no, like I said, that many of them are wanting days off. And now we're paying the subs instead of putting it on our calendar that they have a week off, and we're not paying the subs.
Well, you got the same thing that happens at Christmas time, don't you?
Uh, uh, all I'm saying is, I think there's a way to steal days, take a day here, take a day here. Let's give them a full week off. We're giving them three days at Easter. All we need is to find two more days to make five. Then we don't pay all that subbing. That, that's got to add up.
This was discussed with administration in a group, am I right?
And? Yeah, yeah.
Anyone presented what you did?
No. Well, and, and I, and I did, um, Director Nyberg asked me to run some of those numbers over the weekend, and I do have some of those numbers.
Oh, God.
Just want to share with you. And what I did, just as a comparison, I also picked MEA, um, the, the day before MEA and the Monday after MEA, just as a comparison. And I did the same thing with Thanksgiving. I did the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break and the Monday after Thanksgiving break. So, and I don't know, I don't know about how many were denied or how many personally, I don't have that number. I don't have the requests. I just have how many we filled.
But the fact that some were, they were saying no more, we're not approving any more personal days.
That could have happened, yeah, yeah. So on, um, so on that day before and the day after MEA, we had nine people request, nine, nine people request, nine teachers, I should say. I didn't go into AFSME, I didn't go into Paris, and I just, I just did teachers. Um, we had nine teachers, um, request that day, and that they did get it. Um, at Thanksgiving, we had six. So somebody, you know, somebody said before, somebody said after, there were six. And at Easter, there was 12. So if there is, there was more on Easter, the 70, I don't know if that's, this was from Kathy, she ran it.
So what you're saying is my numbers are wrong?
I don't know. I mean, 70 people might have requested, I don't know, but 12, we filled 12 spots, um, before and after Easter.
Oh, then what I was told was dead wrong?
That was from Kathy today, um, Kathy Koschak.
Well, thank you. Then I'm wrong, someone gave me the wrong info.
Somebody will be helping us out.
Right, and that's what I was saying.
That doesn't seem right.
On any given day, we probably have five to 10 people out in every building. So do we have 40, 50 people out a day in this district? Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Um, but again, that's PSAs, that's, that's admin, that's, that's all the groups involved.
I still feel we should have a week off. I'm still, I'm still going down with that because Duluth has two weeks off. And I think probably all the districts around here have a week off for families.
Do we help the staff?
Well, so.
Director McGlaughlin there, you had it.
Well, maybe just really, if I could really quick, because I think it kind of plays into that a little bit. So the, the process here is, um, is first of all, we have, we have to follow the language within the contract. So there, contractually, it's 181, um, staff days or teacher days, 171 student days. Um, and in that process, when we, we work on the calendar, there's lots of other things that we have to take into account. For one, um, we make sure that we get to our minimum number of hours in each building. And it's 1,020th high school, nine, 985 or 990th elementaries, which we always meet. We kind of focus on making sure we meet the high school numbers because then the other buildings will fall online. So we're above that number, and we have a little bit of wiggle room in our calendar, probably about 25 hours in a school year. So when we had had this conversation about e-learning days and maybe that isn't the best practice going forward, can we just have a regular old snow day and not have an e-learning day? I ran that math, and we're, we're fine on our hours. We could actually have one more, it might be coming tomorrow or Friday. We could actually have one more day, um, and, and not, would not have to do an e-learning day. Um, and we would be, still be within our hours that are required. Um, so in that process, we take all that into account, um, you know, looking at those PLC days, looking at the vacation days, looking at conferences. And then we consult with Hugh, which we are required to do per the contract. So I think, and I, and I'm not going to speak for Mrs. Lenganki, but, um, this calendar as presented, teachers and students would be done by the end of May, and I think they're excited about that. I think the teaching staff, when they discussed it, they, they were excited about that. It doesn't happen very often. I mean, it's about once in every six, seven years that you can actually be done in May, just based on the calendar. Um, so if tonight, if we, if we said, no, we need, we want to do something different, that's, I still need to go back and consult with Hugh and get their input on the calendar. Um, but they had approved as presented, the Hugh group, the governance board, I, I don't know if they had. Mr. Ganki, did you have reps in every building that, that had some input?
Yes.
Do you have all the teachers vote on that?
It depended on the rep at the building, but yes, I believe they were voting.
Every, every teacher in the district votes on it?
I know at the high school, they voted their preference, and then not everybody, of course, agrees.
Their preference? What do you mean?
Their preference.
Between this calendar and this calendar? And were they given a preference of a week off?
No, no, we were looking at conference days.
So they worked out, this is the bottom line, that they wanted the week off instead of whatever else.
Well, the only, the only, I mean, and again, Ms. Lenganki, I do not want to put words in your mouth, but I, when we looked at the calendar originally, I think you had some ideas on the calendar. And I think when I showed you that we'd be done on May 31st, I think I saw excitement in your face.
Yes.
I don't know if that's true or not. So I, that was kind of a driving force, right, that we weren't going into June. Um, I think if we were going into June, it's a different conversation, right? I mean, if we went, if we went that second week or that first week in June, we added a day or two, probably isn't a big deal. But to be done in May, I think is a big deal.
Why is that a big deal? Just curious.
Because come, when it, when the sun comes out and it's the first or second week in May, and if you are a teacher in this district or a student in this district, you're, it's hard to keep kids interested when it's 90, 85 degrees out and they know that, that that summer's around the corner. I think it's, it's just tough.
And they can look for summer jobs quicker.
They, they.
They don't want to work. So, I mean, that summer job thing, uh-uh, I won't buy that one bet.
Director McGlaughlin, say it.
I don't buy it. Uh-uh.
Director McGlaughlin.
I was only going to say, in the Bardot Amendment, there's Article 12, length of school year. And so whatever that means in that interpretation, I mean, we have to comply with that.
I think in, in looking at that, I, you know, with, with this calendar and with the, the current year's calendar, I'd have, I'd have to, again, I'd have to, um, sit and discuss it with Ms. Lenganki. But I think we could get into the second week of June with 39 weeks if we had to. Now, for instance, if this was a year and we hadn't utilized those e-learning days as we did, and we had all the snow days that we did, and they were just traditional snow days and there was no e-learning, we would have had to have had some days in June to make up that time. We, we wouldn't have, wouldn't have met our minimum.
Okay, yeah.
So that, that's another thing just to, to consider. If, if we do plan, um, to go into June and we do extend our holidays at, at any of these breaks, and then we have a bad winter and we have to make time up, we would have to work with the union to make that happen because we'd still have to meet the contract.
Can we at least give the teachers the option and let, they may come back and still say that they don't want that week? You know, they, they certainly.
It would be nice to know, yeah.
It's different, me, I think it's different than giving them the option, hearing what they prefer rather than us just assuming and making that decision without even asking them.
Agreed, I'm totally agree.
Okay, I'll call for a move.
But wait, wait.
This could go on, not. Call for a move. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, what are we voting?
We're voting on, adopt the schedule that was presented to us by the administration. You'll tell again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name.
Opposed? Same thing? One, eight.
Hi, so, no.
No, name, not whatever it is.
Four, or four, and you have the two, or it gets a motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item, this 10 discussion items, I see none there.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Chair?
Motion for adjourned.
Thank you. No objection, the meeting is adjourned, approximately 4:12, and I'd like to thank everyone who's out there for coming here.